There's Brian and it is six oh one.
All right. It's six oh one. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, January twenty. Select day meeting for the town of Georgetown. The meeting's being recorded for our YouTube. I think I'm like two weeks in a row getting there, two times in a row getting that right. Fault order something to. Is there any public comment? I do not see any.
I will note for the record that we have our county commissioner Todd Mcfee in the room. If that's okay, John?
No, please.
Okay.
And also you represented to the regional jail.
To the regional jail.
To Bridges Regional Jail.
I hope not to visit that place anytime soon.
Well, if you do, you know.
All right, no public comment then, or we're done with that, I guess. Those are with you.
All right, we had no items to be added to the agenda tonight, though we will be tabling the abatement request from Sideman, requests plural from Sideman Ledges LLC. When we get to that point, we also had no scheduled appointments. I will say the minutes did go out late today. I know Bronwyn had sent over a suggested change to those minutes. So if folks comfortable or want to table either or.
I'd like to table on.
Okay.
I'll give approval.
All right.
Second.
All right, and Bronwyn, all in favor? Three to oh, perfect. And there were no items for review in your packet. And if we could get formal action on the abatement request from Sideman Ledges, a move, motion to table.
Move to table the abatement request from Sideman Ledges?
Second.
All right.
In that connection, I, I was really surprised to learn that they were planning to drive up here from Boston to be at this meeting. And I, I just think that we need to emphasize to people that they get absolutely the same attention by connecting with us on the Zoom link as by driving three hours up, three hours back to spend ten minutes in the room talking about their issue. Because it, it's a good convenience and it, it's a real boon to keep people involved. And I'm sorry to, I'm glad that Tyler caught them before they left, but I'm sorry they were planning to make that trip.
And I, I believe, jumping off from that point, I believe we want to have an established procedure and I, I think Jonathan's probably prepared to do that where, you know, it's clear what, how we're going to address abatements, that it's not going to be, and it's fine to have a discussion, but if we have nine abatements, we can't have a back and forth and it essentially turn into a public comment about that person's abatement. I don't think that's an efficient way and not everyone will be, will feel treated the same way. I think there has to be a process that we follow for each and every abatement and.
Sure, some probably on Thursday.
So, um, that's what I'm asking and, and I.
No, no, you mentioned that last week and I totally spaced it.
No, that's okay. We're not, you know, we only have one today and you can follow, you know, the process.
And, and the good news is in talking with the folks that are getting with abatements today, Sideman's tabled, but now wellers as well, we'll be having me present the findings of facts based on the request.
Right.
Then we'll give the landowner resident the opportunity to speak and then after that it's cut off so the board can deliberate.
Right.
Because I agree, Aria, last time it was a little bit of a Pandora's box with some of the back and forth.
Right. And it just, you know, I don't want anybody to feel like when they come to a later meeting that they didn't get the same treatment from us that the first couple of abatement requested because we hadn't implemented the plan. It's new, you know, it's a new one for us. So that's all I'm asking. I, I think we're all on the same page.
Agreed. And I think that is equally important to emphasize to people who might better participate on Zoom that they get the same amount of attention, the same back and forth. It, it doesn't matter that you might be sitting in the room. There's only one chance for you to and then otherwise your abatement request speaks for itself.
It was moved and seconded to table.
Yeah, table seven, yeah.
All in favor?
All right, three to zero. And so the next item on the agenda was an abatement request from the Scott and Weller Revocable Trust of twenty thirteen on property nine R lot nineteen. And I, on the abatement request form that I'd sent out as part of the packet, this was an assessment assignment error. And just in summary, shortly prior to April one, the Scott and Weller Revocable Trust of twenty thirteen purchased land from Peter Boucher, who owns two parcels on Segwinwin Road. The initial deed indicated two acres and buildings were purchased or indicated that buildings were a part of the purchase. The town office did in error assign the wrong lot to the sale, not realizing it was a split versus a direct sale. And a corrective deed was issued after April one twenty twenty four. And just as a reminder and for members of the public, April one is the cutoff date for tax assessments. And so we work with deeds that come in up until April one for the, for that tax year, things after that would come in on the next one. And so a corrective deed was issued after April one, but again, that was not something we were looking at at the time. And so the abatement applicees from the truck, application from the trustees is to reduce the valuation. They've also paid the taxes on nine R lot nineteen. And I would just note that nine R nineteen should not have been assessed to them and their purchased land was not split from the previous owner. And so my recommendation to the board would be to deny the trustee's application to reduce valuation because the property is accurately assessed. I would then say the board should move to abate the full amount of taxes paid on this parcel as it was assessed to the wrong owner and we would return that check to the wellers or return an amount of what they paid. And the correction will be picked up in the course of the assessor's work over the next year. So this is part of the reason we have that overlay when we commit taxes is for errors similar to this.
And Tyler, have you explained your thought process and, and how this all shakes out to the wellers?
We have spoken a few times.
Okay, I assumed as much, but.
Though they have not seen this memo.
Yeah.
Yes, Bronwyn.
Oh, does this mean that no taxes will be paid by anyone on NR oh nineteen?
For this lot, for this year? Yes, but it will be picked up in ensuing years. And the next tax year, and we've already flagged this for review and to get it taken care of, but you are correct, Bronwyn. And I would just say due diligence to the wellers to make sure that they got a check in and paying when we knew that this was going to be an error that we worked through in the process. So this one's a pretty straightforward one. It was an error on our part and we'd like to have that corrected. So I think there would be two motions.
Uh, so I'll move to deny the abatement request from the Weller Revocable Trust.
Two, yeah.
Given, given the mistake, I'll second it.
All right, any more discussion on that? Oh, all in favor?
Thank you. And then the second motion would be to abate the full amount of taxes paid on that parcel.
So moved. I, I would move that we abate the full amount of taxes paid on that parcel.
Second.
All in favor? And that is three to zero. And so I will be reaching out to the wellers via letter to let them know that this will be coming and that check will be cut in due course on a warrant. And so that completes the abatement request side of things, though I, if the weller, I totally going against that process. We said I did not give the wellers a chance to speak.
All right.
Though now we've kind of resolved it.
I want to thank you all for quickly resolving this and, you know, we'll be looking forward to just following the town's lead on the next tax cycle, make sure everything's trueed up correctly.
Absolutely. And thank you, thank you, Scott and Jess for flagging this and working with us through a series of deeds to get to the bottom of it.
Well, thank you, everyone. We really appreciate. Take care.
All right. And so in your packet, I would just note that we had a series of correspondence sent along. I included an email from the state of Maine's emergency management hazard mitigation officer. The Friends of Segwin Island Lighthouse Station have had experienced some significant erosion on the island. Segwin, though Popem and Pittsburgh like to claim it as theirs, as our island, and though we gave it to the feds back in the time of George Washington, but I digress. But with the erosion out there, they've been looking at potential grant funding where they could work with, with the state on getting some of that fixed. And unfortunately, they're, the way they're set up, they cannot access some of those funds. But they could work with the town as a sub applicant on a potential grant. So I have a meeting with the hazard mitigation officer up by Zoom later this week and I'll keep the board apprised of possible next steps. But before I had that meeting, I just wanted to touch base that this is something that is out there.
Well, is it, I guess I have a concern that all of this is off the table, given the executive order. And so I don't, I just, I'm not sure. How, when will you know? And, and that my concern also would address, you know, the ARPA funds for the, our cell tower, our resilience grants, anything we've got in process now seems up in the air. So I, I'd be a little concerned about, about that and, but I guess we'll, I guess we'll wait and see. There's a, you know, there's a moratorium on the executive order until February third now, as of a little while ago.
My question is back, so fossils is the Segwinland.
Friends of Segwinland Island Lighthouse Station.
I see the friends of, okay. I agree with Aria that, that this, but the MEMA hazard mitigation, all those things are uncertain at the moment. But I think we should move forward, assuming that these are programs that have previously been authorized by the Congress, that they will be reinstated. And that if they're not, they ought to be, and we need to advocate for that. So I would certainly support working with fossils to explore the kind of grant that could be written and hopefully it'll be possible, it'll be possible to submit it. I, I don't think there's, don't we already have the ARPA money?
Yes, yes.
All of that?
It's in the bank, so to speak. And who's that?
It's me, hello.
Mary, you're not muted yet.
Muted now.
Um, it's a let's see, and then there's the FEMA money that we're getting for repairs at the wharf. That had, that is already in process, correct?
Yes. And, and just for what it's worth, I planned on touching more on that spending freeze in my admin update, but while we're on it now, we at the town are monitoring the news that broke today. I have reached out to Pine Tree Engineering because we had some monies through the department of, through the DEP
DEP, yeah.
for a portion of the Robin Hood grant. They are confident as of today that we will be getting the money from the DEP side. We've already have in-house the monies that came in from MEMA for the Robin Hood Colbert. In terms of the FEMA monies that Mike McDermott helped track down, down at the wharf, I have reached out to Sagatahawk County EMA and I have a call out waiting to hear back. I will say that MEMA did reach out and basically say they are working on tracking down answers in real time. So that's kind of one where we will keep you updated as we know more.
It's Mary Swain. She's not muted.
Yeah.
Yes. And, and so looking at those sides of things, we're trying to keep track on where those different pieces in regards to fossils. This was a meeting that we set up well before this was, and, and I kind of like the tack of let's take the meeting and I bet in my conversation with them, I'll be able to find out a little bit more on where things stand too, because I think over the next couple of days, there's going to be a whole lot of information that's updating in almost real time.
So I want to get back to the ARPA funds for the cell tower. I know we have our money. Does the county have all of its money? They've got everything they need. So it's not, the project's not going to be halted on that side. Okay.
No.
I mean, we, we received all of our money at one time. I remember that. And my thought is that they did the same and the requirements were you commit it by right December, and then you spend it, it, you know, before next, in the next year. Yeah, okay. So I mean, I, you know, we can confirm that, but I, I would think it wouldn't be any different. Okay, that'd be great. We did confirm it. Yep, I can certainly inquire. Thank you, Mary.
But I'm glad that we're all thinking along the same lines of let's secure those dollars.
Let's, yeah, let's draw them all down and, and get them locked up.
And, and in terms of correspondence, we also, I sent along the Maine Climate Council's newsletter, which was pretty focused on the youth climate summit, but there were a lot of other good resources in there. I also wanted to note that, again, Sagatahawk County Emergency Management, the, the deputy director is headed to back to the probate department. And I just wanted to say tonight, and I know I speak for myself, but everyone here in Georgetown, that Hannah Dixon during those January storms significantly stepped up to help us and it was very appreciated and we wish her well. I would note that the town of Georgetown, the Shellfish Conservation Committee had put out a notice about a fundraiser that they are looking to do proceeding. And I know Bronwyn has a, has a thought on this.
Yeah, I had some comments about that. I was really shocked to see that letter. First of all, it didn't say who it was to. It didn't, it didn't even have a last name. I understand it went out to an email list that Jim Peavy maintains. I don't know which list because I don't believe that I saw it. When I was chairing the TOPMB, every year there was an article in the warrant authorizing us to accept outside funds, to accept grants. Absent that, it was my understanding that town committees don't go out and fundraise. That money, and this is a particular project, it doesn't seem to me like it should be an emergency, no need. It didn't happen overnight. So why wasn't it part of their budget? And if it doesn't have to happen immediately before town meeting, why is it not in the coming budget? And I'm just all, I understand that Tyler and Mary had signed off on this process. But another feature of the TOPMB ordinance was that no individual was able to accept money for the town. That was all based on past misuse of when people would hand cash to a TOPMB member for a light, for a mooring, not a mooring, but a, a commercial fisherman's license. And that was outlawed in the ordinance. So it disturbs me that suddenly a member, not even the chair, of a town committee is going to accept checks at his residence address made out to the town for a project that hasn't been part of the budget and hasn't been approved therefore by the town. So I don't mean to, what I really mean to do is raise flags for any future issues like this, that maybe there should be a policy. Maybe the committees should know that. And if Mary is confident that this procedure is okay with the auditors and with the whole system of, you know, then I'm not going to countermand any, trying to countermand anything. But I would like to understand you're thinking about precedent, about other committees, about the idea of fundraising outside of the town budget and where that authority comes from.
On the, at the, at the meeting, well, this is part of my other stuff, but at the Shell, Shellfish Committee meeting, they last year, they took that from their budget because they were trying to, everybody was trying to cut the, keep the budgets down lower, keep them flat. And they had done some different conservations and then as it came around, there was something with what the state's doing and keeping your license and, and conservation time. There's a couple of different things that were going that have how did Marissa, she, Marissa explained it certain way. Some towns have stopped doing conservation and then there's, there's other things involved, but with the conservation, doing the conservation stuff, it, it has something to do with the state and some of the other things with the shelter. I can't remember exactly what the particulars were. But that's why they didn't have it in their budget. And we found they still had some other monies that they hadn't used. That's where that, they didn't think they had any and that was the biggest concern right there when they started. And then that was just an idea that they came up with after the, you know, while we were there and I wasn't, I, I wasn't exactly sure how it was going to work. And that's, I think we asked, did we ask you about it?
Yes, Jim, so, yes, Jim Feeder reached out to me about it, yes. Um, this is what I would be, what I would consider a special revenue, Bronwyn, in that, in that they've will be raising funds for a special project and that, and therefore I'll be setting up separate accounts for them, almost like I did for the tower. I have a couple of concerns about it. One is it wasn't in budget anywhere.
Well, and that was.
It always has been as part of their normal process. Seed, seed clams is part of their normal budgeting. So um, the other thing is that we have taken donations and in the past, the, the recreation committee got some donations this year. And the, and the working league has given the, given the recreation committee some monies. Um, my problem with that is that the town of Georgetown has a policy, we do not carry forward money other than those that are required by law. Okay, so last year I made the exception with the working league money that the working league gave the recreation committee. But I don't feel it's appropriate to continue to make exceptions to the rule. I mean, the GCC has gotten donations in the past because at least according to Amanda, that's why she told us at, when I was chairing the recreation committee, that we could do it because I had the same, when I was first chair at REC, people wanted to give us donations. I said, we're not allowed. And then we had seen that the GCC had gotten them at one point. And so I think it needs to be clear, whatever. Who's GCC? Oh, the, sorry, the community center. The community center has nothing to do with the town.
It's their own entity.
Oh, we are, we are, the community center has its own board of directors and its, its own five oh one C three. I know that, but I thought because they, they have, I, because I'd asked Amanda about that. It doesn't matter, but I do agree with you that there's a policy that GCC has, it has a budget within the town, right? They, they have a town budget. They have a $10,000 budget or whatever it is. They have an allocation from the town. Right, okay. And so I think that's what I was trying to sort out as were, you know, there was an FAC member that I had talked to about that. I think we do need to have a real clear policy about that, so that committees aren't doing separate things.
Right, right. Only, and so, or.
And I just want, and I just, and I need to make sure that everybody realizes at the end of June, this money will sweep to the general fund, period. That's it. The Shellfish money. This one would not, no, this one will be set up as a special revenue. Okay.
It, the, the other thing was they want the, they wanted the conservation, I can't remember, I think it's in April. And they needed to get the seed clam ordered within the next two weeks or month or something, or you know, it was, it was a timeframe thing also. So that was what the, their biggest concern. Yet, yes, it wasn't on the, on the, on the budget, but that was a short sight because they, just some other, there were a couple of other things that were involved.
Right.
Um, once again, I didn't take good enough notes. I can't follow enough of that stuff, but there were a couple of reasons and they were fairly valid, but I'm sure it's going to be on the budget this year for the, you know, now that we're starting the budget season. So that, does that answer any of your questions? Or, uh, Bronwyn?
It, it, it does answer questions, but it doesn't answer my basic concern. Which is that we need a clearer policy about fun, fundraising by committees outside of the budget and the, and the process of the budget. And we don't have to come up with that tonight, but I think we need one. Um, and also I was kind of surprised that any solicitation went out that we hadn't already seen as a select board.
And, and going forward, Bronwyn, we'll make sure that the select board is aware of these things in real time. I agree that definitely a policy makes sense. And none of that is to take away from the awesome work that Jim's doing because it is a huge town resource that they're working on. And I see him in the audience and all of these process concerns aren't really away from the message of what folks are trying to accomplish. It's just, we need a better process to get there.
And I think it's important, you know, back to the points we're making that Mary started is, you know, to, to make sure that we all understand the policy, that then we we give the, you know, explanation, share that with the FAC. FAC liaisons to each of the committees are sharing that information and that it's the consistent across the board. And hopefully we won't get in, you know, have, have these questions later on. I guess I have a totally separate question, which is have they considered trying to work with, and I assume they have, Georgetown aquaculture at all?
There were, there were a couple of different options that they are going to look into beyond.
This fundraiser?
Yes, whether, like you say, whether it was that, whether it was like Island Institute, some other, there were some other, they definitely had some other places they were going to look into, so.
That's helpful.
And that's great to do as part of the budgeting process that starts now. Because we don't necessarily want to allocate all the necessary money from town taxes if we don't have to. So if there are grants and if there are other sources of income, it would be great to consider those now for next year. That's, that's the other piece of my comment. But I'm not saying it's not a worthy project.
Tyler, if I could?
Nope. It's a public comment.
No, that'd be at the end.
There is a second public comment at the end, Jim.
Thank you.
Are we good on the Shellfish Conservation Committee notice to move on to the next?
I'm sorry, I interrupted your, your, yes.
I think, I think it's very good and I think it's good that we're kind of all on the same page that streamlining the policies and frankly, we have a financial controls policy that we talked about revisions to almost a year ago now, it seems, when we had that workshop. And I imagine this is something that could be worked into financial control side of things as well.
Yes, I'd like to be part of that workshop. Okay.
Absolutely. And there also, I included the Conservation Commission's potluck notice that is coming up on February.
Eight.
Eight, I don't need to.
Next Saturday.
Yes.
Not this coming, next.
And I also included an email from town council regarding some upcoming bills in the legislature. And as these come along, I will be sharing with the board just as we get these. Sometimes it'll make sense for the town of Georgetown to go up and testify or submit testimony. Sometimes it won't, but I always want to make sure the board has that information. The Maine Municipal Association sent out their main town and city magazine and the copies are in your mailboxes. And the Maine Municipal Association as well had some, I had a good, I had a good workshop the other day on a summer internship program that Bronwyn and I attended the Zoom on. And I wanted to provide some of that information to the board about that program and where it could potentially go. The Maine Municipal Association also included a legislative update about their general assistance public hearings that actually are well underway. I was speaking with an MMA person about that today. I included Maine Municipal Association's January RMS Express. Central Maine Power had put out a very good notice about watching out for imposters. And I also just wanted to share, well, it's passed now. It wasn't at the time of the packet. The Georgetown Community Center had their community cupboard notice and they will be doing that again next month. And so that completes correspondence. If there are any other questions. If not, under continuing items, I would just note that the Philippa Dexter at One Town Landing Road oh one U lot forty-four is up for renewal and the Hall Revocable Trust, I should have a map and lot on there that is not. I will get that to you, but that one has been approved. In regards to committee updates, I've been in receipt in between the last meetings of the planning board minutes and the TOPMB minutes. And I'm sure that I'm missing someone else, but minutes are getting uploaded to the website far more regularly now than they had been. Though, as I tell residents, always feel free to prod me because there's a chance that I have it sitting in an inbox if it's not there and not on YouTube. In regards to membership, I have no one tonight to bring forward for the ad hoc town committee. That town report committee that we set up, but I did just want to let folks know that we had a, a very good community member send out a notice that we shared on the Facebook page about this today. And that email actually got us three residents in the first hour and a half of that email going out, expressing interest. A different range of social groups in town, a different age range and a different skillset range. And so I'm excited to hopefully be able to bring up a full roster or at least a couple of folks to get that work underway at the next meeting. And now I have talked too much, so I'm going to be quiet so I can have the board members give their board member and committee liaison updates.
Oh, we went through most of my Shellfish Committee one, but they've also given us some updated fee schedules for the non-resident, or I mean, excuse me, non-commercial things. And we've got that to look at.
Yes.
And then TOPMB, they're still looking for people to do the, or somebody do the maintenance for the town properties. Um, they're working on their lease agreement for the wharf.
And signed.
Oh, it has?
It got signed, uh, with the next morning?
That was a couple of days ago then, wasn't it? Um. And then, yeah, that was about all that. And planning board, the people doing the tower came down for their free. Permit or first, it's like a preliminary meeting before they actually do for the permit, um. Blah, blah, blah. They want the, they wanna make sure we uh, update and have our fees for putting cell towers in, which we apparently forgot to do when we did the fee schedule. And the other thing is they were, we need, they were asking if the town had. Since they didn't have any money in their budget for the survey that they wanna put out if the town has the, um. In their discretionary, I guess. For their, um, survey, which we have a copy of and I assume we will probably be looking at at some point later. And that's about, that's everything I had right there.
Thank you, John. Bronwyn or Aria?
Nobody's met since we last met, none of my committees, but the Solid Waste Committee has been, um. A series of emails have gone around, um, and that resulted in, in a memo that Tyler sent to the. Town attorney for us, um, today, yesterday, um, with a series of questions. That we would like her to consider and some background about why these issues are important. Uh, as the Solid Waste Committee gets around to considering amending their ordinance. Um, and because the ordinance changes proposed last year, we're shot down on some legal grounds. Um, without discussion, we want, we don't wanna spend the energy rewriting a lot of sentences. If the concept behind them is not going to fly, um, and I think that's about it, for me.
Thank you, Bronwyn.
Um, the harbor committee met recently and they are figuring out a plan for, um. Uh, distributing the, uh, mooring stickers. And so I did see Woody a couple of days later here in the office, so I think he's probably working with y'all to, and with Alex to get that done. Um, we've talked about how those, uh. Will be distributed either with some volunteer help, couple of people in the community, um, perhaps including a. I wondered if we had a high school or who needs pro bono hours that could help stuff the envelopes and those kinds of things, so. Um, and then some discussion about, uh, what is it, the whisper, you know, those boats? The problem boats, um, and uh, that was a fun meeting to sit through, I have to say, um. And the school board, uh, met recently as well and, uh, Mr. Knabber is retired from the school. Um, finally, and the kids gave him a standing ovation in the hallway and that was very nice. Um, and they dedicated the winter concert to him too, if, if any of y'all were able to make that. Um, Chris Van Duzen, the, uh, author who, uh, writes a lot of children's books in Maine, will be visiting the school later in February. And then they'll have a career day, um, highlighting various careers in Sagatoh County. Um, out at Edgecombe School, cause we're part of AOS ninety-eight school district. And, um, that, those are the only committees of mine that have, uh, met since our last meeting.
Thank you, Aria. Any questions for Aria on that report? If not, I will jump into my town administrator update. Again, I just, we are monitoring all of the federal spending freeze order with the information as it's coming in and we will be keeping folks. Updated on what we find out. I also wanted to note that shortly after our last meeting, I met with the Sagatoh County administrators and managers. We discussed that the county will soon be working on a strategic plan. And it's likely that towns may be asked to designate a board member or some board members to attend some of these meetings. Though all of that is still to be determined at this point. And part of this discussion could possibly talk about regional collaboration and I'll keep folks surprised. And just in the consistent theme, I did raise the successful assessing program run by Cumberland County. And Lincoln County's animal control officer model at that meeting and something that I think could be looked into it. Possible down the road solutions to small town problems. I also wanted to note that we will be getting twelve new chairs for the conference room and I say new in quotes because they are donations. So our pink dusty somewhat bent faded chairs are gonna be replaced by. Some that come from the main judicial courtroom at the Sagatoh County building. They were put out yesterday as speak now or forever hold your peace and I said sold and we've got them. And I'm now noticing that we have a very legal theme with our seating, chairs from the bar, so I digress. And I did wanna just keep the board aware that. We spent some time and have worked with Reed Birdzel on the emergency communications tower paperwork, namely the assignment of an agent. That took a couple of days, but all parties were in agreement. And I just wanna thank Bob, Mike, Reed, John, and everybody that was involved in those kind of discussions. And along the same theme of Reed, this time Reed State Park, I did send along to the board today that Georgetown was. In the Bangor Daily News for some of its contributions to World War Two's history. And some of the lingering impacts to this day and it's a really good read. And again, I'll be meeting regarding that fossils proposal on Thursday. And the last thing in my report, I did have a spot on the website set up for the packets to be posted. And so if you go on the website, you click on town office, there's a dropdown menu for scheduled meetings. That's where folks have always gone to find the minutes. And so I've added another tab right next to the minutes that's titled upcoming select board meeting information. And the packets there, the agenda's there, good links to YouTube, so in the interest of transparency, all of that will be on our website. Until not next Monday, but the following Monday when we replace it with the subsequent select board. And upcoming info, so beyond that, if there are any questions, happy to answer them. If not, I can turn this over to Mary.
I just have one clarifying, as I recall. Um, even though the pack will come down in time for the next meeting packet, it would still be available if somebody came and said, I'd like a copy, email me the PDF. So, w- we're essentially archiving that, but they're still available, just so that y'all know that.
And just to clarify, those packets that get posted will not have anything that is confidential, executive session related. Or draft minutes, because we don't want stuff to, well, that was official when it wasn't yet, so, thank you, Aria.
Thank you for making that happen.
And Mary, you are up.
All right, I'm up. Um. Just so you know, the budget letter and the draft document for twenty-five, twenty-six have been sent to all the committees and the boards and their FAC liaisons. Or liaison, um, this year's COLA is at two point five percent and the new federal mileage rate is seventy cents a mile. Uh, we, I will need guidance from the board at some point, whether or not you wanna go with those things or not. Um, doesn't necessarily, doesn't need to come tonight. Um, direct, as you know, we, uh, implemented direct deposit effective January one, no more checks will be issued to employees, um. We have only one, uh, fire department member, um, who is currently out of state that, that isn't getting it or, or that hasn't gotten it to us, just cause she's out of state. Um, and then the two TOP MB members, which only get paid twice a year, so it won't matter till June. So, um. That, that has gone well. Um, the W twos and ten ninety-nines have been issues to the, to the employees and the vendors. Um, however, we were supposed to get them done on the, um, IRS. Um, website, which we were unable to, or which I was unable to do, uh. Due to portal access and codes and this and that and the other thing, so I issued them manually to all employees. Um, and I will go ahead and send them to the state as I normal, or, or the feds as I normally do. Um, and continue to look at, into getting on the portal. Um, I think I seem to always be talking about audits, audits, but we'll be having a workers' compensation audit remotely. Um, in the middle of, uh, February, so I'm gathering all the documents for that now, um. And we have ten parcels, um, that will receiving foreclosure notices. Uh, foreclosure notices will go out in between, uh, first couple of weeks in February for full foreclosure. The end of March, um, we do have ten parcels, I expect. Probably at least eight of those will be paid off, eh, I mean, six of them will be paid. A couple of them, uh, will not be, so.
Is that about average? I mean, is that a?
We have two that are currently in foreclosure, um, one I'm working with the people. Um, and I think that he knows that he's got until, you know, February fifth of this, you know, so, um. But the other one, we're having a hard time tracking down. And one of the ones that's going to foreclosure this time has two parcels. Um, the one that we, we also have the, uh, outstanding tree cutting violation, should that property sell? I don't, I don't know if you remember that, we had, we had a shoreline zoning violation up there for tree cutting. We received half of the money and, and it, there's a lien on it, not a town, the, uh. So, uh, should that property sell, the town will get that, that as well. Um, so anyway, I just wanna let you know that those are out there, you may or may not hear from anybody, I'm not sure. Um, and then, as you know, interest began on taxes on the twenty-sixth, um, and we've already moved two point five million. Um, into various accounts, uh, with, you know, various banks locally, um. To get better interest rates. So right now I'm looking at three point six seven to four two five. So they're pretty low, but it's a lot better than, you know, stuff, so. And I do believe that is it for me.
So, in terms of the, how much are you at? Eighty percent of taxes have been paid, seventy-five, sixty?
Uh, no, and I honestly, I can't, I can't tell you, I, it, well. Uh, Trio did an update and we could not get our report out at the end of December. They have corrected it, so I'm hoping that, you know, at the end of this week, I'll have a solid number. Um, but I believe we're at, uh, like one point nine, so we've collected a lot. Anything else?
No.
No, done?
No, I think you, yeah.
So the next item of business is our lone item of lone business tonight, which is a proposal regarding a working group. To draft a working waterfront ordinance slash policy and I did submit a memorandum to the board. And just by way of background, in twenty twenty-four, the town of Harpswell adopted a right to fish policy. In response to complaints from some new residents about noise and odors associated with commercial fishing. In the fall, our select board heard a request from resident Pat Burns and Aria.
I had brought that up, yeah.
And discussed the possibility of convening a working group to draft a similar town policy or ordinance. And enclosed with this memorandum, I included Harpswell policy that was on the books. As we discussed way back then, the town of Harpswell was hoping to have an ordinance to bring to their. Town meeting and at the last meeting, I informed the board that in talking with. My counterpart in Harpswell, they weren't ready for primetime on that and it kinda moved towards a. Comprehensive plan discussion at this stage. And so I recommend with that background. That the town of Georgetown set up a working group to discuss whether to bring forward a similar policy or ordinance to the select board for approval. And my recommendation on membership is this, obviously all of this is subject to change, but I wanted to get a document for us to work off of. I believe having a select board member on that working group makes a lot of sense. Having a member of the harbor committee, a member of the shellfish conservation committee. A member of the TOP and B, and I say those three committees, cause those are our working waterfront committees in different parts. As well as at least two members of the public and I'd say one of them should be involved in the working waterfront. And I would recommend that they meet at the town office and report back to the select board by the March eleventh meeting. I will say that if it's an ordinance, would be a little bit later than we gave other committees, but with us unlikely to be able to appoint. Members of the public until February eleven, that would give folks a good month or more time if needed, uh, to go from there.
That, uh, one of the things that I, I also wrote shellfish warden as a question mark. Um, to include John in, in this, um, and it, from my perspective, how I was viewing this was very much a, a working waterfront. Versus just a right to fish, because we have, you know, we have aquaculture, we have a lot of, um, folks who, um. Are implicated in this and it's important, uh, to include them. And then. One of the things we talked about and Pat and I've talked about is involving a, um, a local Realtor. Um, as a potential, and maybe we wait and get this going and then add the Realtor of what we need, you know, it'd be great to have their buy-in. If it's an ordinance, then they'll follow the ordinance, um, and we do have, you know, at least one to two, uh. Folks who are in the community who are Realtors and they're aware that this, um, you know, that this is being discussed. So, those are just my comments. Bronwyn's got her hand up.
Well, I was wondering, uh, when you were speaking of the harbor committee, the shellfish. Um, are you expecting those committees to appoint someone?
I would recommend that the liaisons, uh, of tho, to those committees speak with the chair and have those committees appoint someone, yes. So the harbor committee would decide who to.
To this group. Okay, um, I'm not sure about a Realtor. I. Agree with the other categories of people that are listed. Um, I wanna, in reference to the policy statement from Harpswell. I. I think one area that should carefully considered is the statement about, uh, fishing gear. Storage of, of, uh, stuff at your house. Um, and I think it's important to. To remember as a policy, let alone an ordinance, is written. That we are a working waterfront, but not exclusively. Um, one of the issues that's always been clear, if you, from the TOP MB perspective at the wharf. Is that we have a recreational section, we have floats, we have commercial floats, we have, uh. A retail operation which draws a lot of people from away. And some of the fishermen are not very happy with that. So, in, on the one hand, establishing the fact that we are a working waterfront. But on the other hand, not making it clear that that doesn't mean that those who are working the waterfront. Um, own it, get to do whatever they wish with it. Um, it's subject to state regulation, it's subject to, um, sharing. You know, share the road. And so I, I hope the commit, the working, we'll keep that in mind. Because sometimes people take advantage of, um, what they perceive. As validation of their particular point of view. That's just a comment, um, and I assume that, uh. That Aria wants to be the select board liaison to this committee, uh, which is certainly fine with me. Um, I hope. But in terms of writing ordinances, uh, I would hate to see us. So quickly decide that we need an ordinance, a yet another one, um, of all the ones that people already don't read. Um, and I, if there's a need for review or to, to codify. The importance of the working waterfront in somebody's ordinance, perhaps there's a way to include it. In one of the planning board ordinances that has to do especially with permitting new dwellings. Um, or just in general, that development needs to take into account. That this is a work, we honor the working waterfront. It's just a suggestion and, um. I also wonder how many people you want on this working committee. Because adding Realtors and shellfish wardens and, um, yet two, two more people who represent. Whatever public means, um, gets a little cumbersome, maybe. But I, I'm not entering into it further than that. Those are just my observations, no motions.
Even at this point, you're just, the whole, uh. Drafting in orange, if you're just, I mean, as much as anyone finding out more information on what's actually, um. What, what the concerns and the other things are, so I mean, you're, you know, the, the concept of an ordinance, you know. It's awful short, there's not a lot of time for it, but even at that point, you may just be able to find stuff if it's for another. Another cycle. It's kinda like, you know, Harpswell found out it was kinda, kind of, um, complicated and, uh. You might find out the same exact things, so, or, or as we, the town, whatever, might find out that's the same deal, so.
Right, I mean, from my perspective, it really is a no before you buy. You're gonna buy deep waterfront as you've moved here from. Nebraska, you wanted your special view and then you get mad because folks are out there fishing or they're working, you know, yeah. Part of what you bought, you had to know what you bought, um, when you came here and I don't, and, um. There was a specific incident that Pat and I talked about that he related to me.
There was a specific incident that Pat and I talked about that he related to me. And so I think it's um. From my perspective, that's really important, uh, obviously to honor our, uh, our working waterfront community, and also. As we're welcoming people into the community, they need to understand that, that they are coming into a community. We have a school, we have a municipality, we have a fire department, and we're a working waterfront. That's what you bought into. That's where I'm coming from with it, which is why it's important to me to do this.
So do we need to know how many people we want on it right now? Are we still working on that?
I, I think tonight, time is of the essence to at least set up a working group.
Mm-hmm.
I would say that you could designate a select board member tonight. I would ask that liaisons to the different committees reach out to the chairs and say, can we get someone?
Okay.
I think that the two members of the public definitely is important, that way it's just not town office heavy. I will say if we wanted to add the Shellfish Warden, that would give us an odd number versus an even number.
Which is better for voting.
And, you know, and, and I don't know if he would like to serve on this committee, but I'm sure that he probably would have a lot of good info to give.
Yeah.
So if we set up a working group, I would just list off the people that we'd have included in the motion. And if we're adding Shellfish Warden, I'd include that in the motion.
And, and I think we, we do a call out, we've got enough people on here. Uh, if, if two members of the public are interested, they should let. Tyler, they should let you know. And then ultimately, the select board would appoint them. That would be my suggestion.
And, and these meetings will be public, and they will be noticed. Therefore, anyone who wishes to observe or to uh, offer comments will be welcome to come.
Yes.
And be able to utilize the town office conference room equipment like the Owl that could make. Even more participation available.
Right.
I mean, you know, we're talking about a community, so let's, let's involve as many people who are willing to be involved.
No, okay.
So my vote's for you to be the select person thing.
Thank you.
So is that a motion?
I would first move to create the work group, and then I designate Aria, because we don't have a work group technically yet to put her on.
Okay.
I thought Aria was gonna make that motion to create the working group, but.
So moved, thank you, Bromwood. I'll second your motion.
All right, and so, Aria.
You can write it up, Tyler, I'm sure.
Okay, so Aria moves, Bromwood seconds. A working group of a right to fish and no before you I ordinance work group?
No, 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 no.
I'd just call it the work, the working waterfront.
Okay. Working waterfront.
No before you buy.
That covers a lot more.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I just wanna know what we're calling it, because I'm hearing a couple of things and.
Do you like working waterfront?
Um, uh, it, it covers more things, it's just like.
So a working waterfront ordinance work group? And that, and that work group would be charged to either brick.
Start with policy. They could, they're, they can always recommend that it become an ordinance. But let's not assume that we're gonna write an ordinance.
Working waterfront.
Work group. Okay, working waterfront work group?
Yeah, that's right.
And that would include one select board member, one member of the Harbor Committee, one member of the Shellfish Committee, one member of the TOP and B. Two members of the public, at least one of whom is involved in Georgetown's working waterfront, and the Shellfish Warden for a slate of seven. Is that what we're comfortable with?
Yes, and I think, yeah, and I second, thank you.
All right, all in favor?
All right, it is unanimous.
Well, now we can move that Aria be the select board member in that working group.
Second that, all right.
Thank you.
All in favor?
And, you know, it would be my goal, and we would say this to our committees, um. To, you know, ensure that we have a, a good representation of demographics, if we can, ages. Um, gender, you know, people with a lot of different perspectives. I hope that those folks will show up. Um, it's always good to have. Um, different perspectives to, people may think of, you know, somebody is gonna think of something I, I didn't. So.
Thank you. And, and so ideally, by the next meeting, we'll put the word of help out. Folks that are interested in serving should reach out to me. And we'll make appointments for the members of the public at the February eleventh meeting.
And I am quite certain that Pat Burns is gonna wanna be one of those people.
I, I think so too.
So, you know, it may go up to nine.
Okay.
But we're, I think we can manage that.
Okay.
So we'll just have to see. Let's hope there's a lot of interest.
Awesome.
Thank you for uh, pulling that together, Tyler.
Hey, thank you guys, and sorry for the word salad of a title. I just was definitely.
That's okay, you knew what we, where we were headed.
A- and so under new business, we have a discussion and possible action relative to a planning board questionnaire regarding short-term rentals. And I know that the cer- the questionnaire was sent out to the board two weeks ago now, and it was included in the packet. And I would just say at the outset of the discussion, if there was a suggested motion coming from me. I would off, I would recommend the authorization of the planning board to spend up to two thousand dollars on the short-term rental survey. From contingency, just throwing that out there, with it looking like it's gonna cost sixteen hundred in postage. If there are any other costs associated, I'd rather give them a little bit more and have them come under versus having to bring it back again.
And is that postage, the mass media where everybody just gets it? That's, because that's the lowest form of postage, do we know?
Well, no, it's going to taxpayers. Isn't it going to taxpayers?
I believe it's going to the taxpayer list. Right, um, so you.
The bulk one does not go to.
Oh, the bulk.
One only goes in town, will not go to any of your residents, right?
Got it, okay.
As far as I know, anyway, that's what it used to be.
And, and, and we were looking at the cost similar to what we did for tax billing to the residents. And again, that sixteen hundred could come in a little bit lower, because there were some folks that have seven parcels and they don't need seven surveys.
True.
Because they only get one voice, so. But I just wanted to throw out that piece before any other, so it didn't get lost in the conversation.
Would there be, anybody have any issues with their uh, things about the questionnaire?
And I see Bromwood had her hand up for.
Well, first, I wanna say that I think it's definitely worth spending the money. Because in order, in, if you're doing a survey like this, you want to reach as many of the potential stakeholders as possible. And certainly, we would like to know from each, I mean, conceivably, if we don't get responses from. Twenty-five people, we could call them up and ask them the questions. That way, we, we would have a total picture of who is actually renting their properties out. As far as the, um, so when the time comes, I'm happy to move that we appropriate. Uh, the two thou- up to two thousand dollars for this project. I also know we've talked about it for several years, and um, there's a sense of urgency to get a handle. On what the situation actually is, instead of relying on um. Anecdotal evidence. Um, in terms of the survey itself, I don't think that I wanna spend a lot of time going over it question by question tonight. I'm happy to offer a few tweaks uh offline to suggest formatting or wording of questions. I think maybe a, a topic that isn't addressed is where do you advertise? Are you listed in uh Airbnb, VRBO, some other local agency? Um. And I wonder if it's appropriate to ask whether you set limits, do you set limits on the number of people? Um, that your house can accommodate? And who enforces that? I'm thinking of it, uh, an anecdote that Chris Martin related to me about a property he rents. Um, because he's on um, Mac Mahon Island all summer. And isn't, so he rents out his house, I guess. Um, and he limits the number. Um, to something like eleven that can rent it or can habitate uh there, and. He became aware that fifteen people had showed up. And he kept them out, because he's there and he knows that. But oftentimes, it seems like um. The, the listing may say suitable for ten people. But who is around to say, if twenty people show up and sleep on the floor? Um, who's around to say that's not okay? Just a thought about what you could get to in the, in the survey. Generally, questions are good.
Jonathan, would it be, would it be appropriate for me to say something about that from the planning board's point of view?
Disgusting, is that okay, or is that still part of a?
I would say.
Uh, my only concern about that, Lisa, is we did not allow Jim Peavy to do that when it was his time, so.
Well, I just wanted to clarify something regarding the survey, but I'll wait till public conversation then.
Okay, thanks.
Well, is, is it appropriate for me to say anything uh about the, as being the chairman of the planning board? And this item was here at my request.
I, I, I would, I would say that as chair of the planning board, and I, I did tell Bob this would be on the agenda tonight. To be available for any questions.
Fair enough.
So if somebody wanted to ask Bob his thoughts, I think that would be a fair question, though I do think. We definitely wanna make sure that we're consistent, because Jim earlier was a member of the Shellfish Committee. As well, or Shellfish Conservation Committee, so commissioned anyways, tangent.
Any particular questions? I mean, I, I know we're still going through the um. Like, uh, Br- Bromwood was mentioning enforcement, that is something we don't even, that, that, we aren't even. Close, from sitting in, sitting in with your, the meetings on, at your, the TOP and B, uh, no, sorry. Planning board, I'm.
You got a lot of.
I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting confused. Um, and, and once again, this, this, this is still just. Trying to find out, um, as much as anything, trying to find out, um. The, what the community is questioning, and, and as far as um, Bromwood's question about. Numbers of people, there were a couple of questions that, um. If they're monitored, uh, I'm in favor if they're monitored this way, or what problems do you, or what things do you? So I think it covers some of your concerns in that sense. It may not be that. Pinpoint of a question, but it has areas for them to bring up, um, those kind of uh, questions or problems if it, if it uh. If somebody has a problem with, or is curious about that. So, I mean, I, 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 that may not cover everything, but I know there's been a lot of thought gone into this and a lot of back and forth. In how much you wanna ask, and how much you don't wanna ask, and um, but that's, uh, I don't know if that helped out at all.
And, and the, what I would say about eighteen, the, the federal holiday is actually Indigenous Peoples' Day, so I would ask that that be. Characterized from Columbus to Indigenous Peoples' Day. But um, I mean, it looks like a very thorough survey. I know that y'all put a lot of work into that, and we appreciate it.
So I don't have any problems with the survey per se. Um. Are we gonna let Bob tell us his thought?
It.
If somebody wanted to ask Bob if he had a thought, I think we'd be getting consistent, but again. I think that we would just, going forward, wanna have a better practice on it, but I think tonight. We don't wanna do this all wrong and then have to revote in two weeks.
Um, I wanna ask Bob if he's, if he would like us to appropriate the money.
Yes, ver- very much so. That was the sole purpose of this meeting, was to ask you if you would use some of your contingency funds. In order to fund the survey. Uh, the. The amount of sixteen hundred dollars is just for stamps. That doesn't include paper, it doesn't include envelopes, it doesn't include return labels, et cetera. So it might be more than that, and the total budget for the plan, uh, for the planning board for the year is five hundred. So if we're gonna do a survey, we, actually, we, we need your help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so the two thousand should, should be taken care of.
And, and, and we just got a, a, a.
Yep.
Healthy dose of envelopes here at the town office, though I do think the planning board will need to put in some muscle power on helping stuff those envelopes.
So do, do.
Not a problem.
Have we made, have we made the motion yet?
Uh, I think Bromwood was going to, but not I will.
Um, I, I thought I had, but I will, I move that we uh, appropriate up to two thousand dollars. For the use of the planning board in sending out uh, the survey about short-term rentals.
From contingency?
From contingency.
I second the motion for up to two thousand derived from contingency to disseminate the survey.
All in favor?
I am seeing unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. And so the next item of business is to determine the time for a public hearing and subsequent vote to amend the fee schedule. And by way of background, and I included some notes from, from Mary, from Bob. John had a little bit of information as Shellfish Liaison, and since I've spoken with Stephen Mace. There are a couple of corrections to the fee schedule that'll need to be undertaken, but the way we set it up, we required. A public hearing to give the public notice that these fees could be changing. Last year, when we were updating the fee schedule for the first time, the five hundred dollar fee for a wireless tower. Uh, application was omitted, and given the fact that we have one coming before the planning board soon. It's important to get that on there. Mary had requested that we included an NSF fee on checks, which has been for return checks. It's been a standard practice in Georgetown, but it was something that did not get added last time. And the Shellfish Committee is hoping to change their residential. License to twenty dollars, non-resident to forty, and a seven-day to thirty-five. And that came from John as the liaison, and on the SCIF fee for Todd's Landing. The TOP and B believes that it should have stayed twenty-five dollars, not fifty, and I vaguely remember that discussion. What seems like many, many moons ago. So to that end, we would need to schedule a public hearing, and then we could go in and talk about changes, merits, all of that in one good pass. I would say that the next select board meeting is February eleventh. We could hold off until that point, or if we wanted to hold a special meeting sometime next week, I just need s- at least seven days to. Have it posted here at the post office, et cetera, on the website, that these changes could be coming.
Um, if, if it's gonna be next week, I'm not going to be available.
Okay.
All for the eleventh then.
The eleventh?
Yeah, I, I'd save it the eleventh. Um, are we talking about? Before, prior to the select board meeting, or?
The, the way I.
Then when.
We could schedule the public hearing as a part of the select board meeting, so we would set a scheduled appointment time. I would say probably six PM as we normally kick off, that gives folks a chance to come. And we could go from there. I do think in regards to the wireless tower piece in the public hearing notice. We may want to have a retroactive date, just to make sure we're, we're completely covered by waiting until February, but I do think that's something that could be accomplished. And then after that public hearing ended, we go into our normal meeting, and we'd eventually get to the new business item and. Address it then, and the fee schedule would be posted and accurate, and I appreciate everybody that caught these things in it. I love that it all happened. Around the same time, so that is good news. Thank you, Bromwood.
Well, I, I'd go for the eleventh.
Perfect.
If it makes that meeting longer than usual. And especially to get to actually vote on the fees at that, that same night.
Absolutely. So, and because we're doing that the eleventh, we don't need a motion or a vote, but in the event that we needed a special meeting, I wanted to. Have that slated on the agenda. And so the last item of business, before we get back to public comment, and then ultimately adjournment. Was a request from the Fire Chief regarding the use of the town's Owl for town departments, boards, and committees. And by way of background, just so the full board is aware, since we practiced the Owl, which is a pretty expensive piece of technology. I have not allowed the Owl to leave this brick and mortar building of the town office. Whether it's someone that I think could be very trustworthy, whether I think it's someone that might drop it, I've tried to be very consistent. I do know that with very rare exception, we have not turned down anyone to be able to utilize the Owl here at town office. Whether it's a town committee, obviously takes priority board commission, et cetera. We have some affiliated town groups that have utilized our software, including Georgetown Age Friendly. We've scheduled some of their meetings, but again, it's something that's happened here at the office. And I do know in the month leading up to the election, I did outside of town committees. Not allow outside groups into the conference room, because the clerk did utilize, this is some storage for. Voting machines and so on, and the immediate run-up to the election. And so I just wanna share all of that. I know that Brian is looking to. Utilize the Owl at one of his community events that would be at the community center in about two weeks, and I just. Again, because I had been consistently saying the Owl can't leave the building, I wanted to check in with the board on. Consistency or not, I can see some merit in it leaving, but if we make an exception for one, I worry that we then. Could end up in a spot where we say no to someone else. Am I kinda catching? end up in a spot where we say no to someone else. Am I kinda catching folks up to speed? I see Bronwyn's hand up.
I have a comment.
Yep, Bronwyn.
Yeah, um, my perspective is that, and I'm happy to make this into a motion, that any group that books the conference room is authorized to use all of the equipment there. The, the owl, the internet, the connection, the computer that functions it, the big screen. But that none of that equipment, it's all part of an upgrade of the conference room and intended to make any meeting there run more smoothly and be available in a good form on the internet. And none of that equipment should leave the building. That's my perspective. And I don't, I, I do think that if the fire department once wanted to make their own meeting space more internet-friendly, Zoom-friendly, they would do well to invest in their own owl and outfit that facility. And then if it's theirs and they wanna move it around, that would also be fine. But I do think that it's part of, well, it's part of the equipment, and it's just not a good policy to let it move. That's my perspective.
So with all due respect to that perspective, I, I actually think that we could accommodate requests from people that, you know, the fire chief to sign out the owl and take it to the community center, or take it to the historical society. I was at the meeting, the first informational meeting for the fire department. We didn't have the owl, it was clunky. You know, the community center can, there may be times that the community center wants to use the owl. And if Mary, if Mary wanted to sign it out, or Mark wanted to sign it out, or Angie wanted to sign it out, it is, you know, these were, from my perspective, it was tax dollars. Well, I guess it was ARCA funds, wasn't it? It is a community.
Still taxed dollars.
Yeah, right. It's community, it's a community piece of technology. I am, you know, I'm, I would be obviously concerned to make sure that people knew how to transport it properly and to take care of it, but my assumption is, on those few occasions that would be asked to leave, that the owl would be asked to fly out of the building, that the person would confirm their ability to keep it safe and to bring it back. And that's just my perspective on that. I, I wanna reach as many people as we can, and the owl does help with that. And it's important, in particular for the fire department, to be able to reach as many people, because we're trying to build up that number. So that may be inconsistent, but it is important to me that we have some outreach for the fire department. And, you know, there may be other entities that we say the same thing for. The planning board needed to have a meeting and use the historical society, the GCC.
The historical society has their own owl, as I understand it.
They have a, they have a handle system.
They do, okay. Good, great.
Oh, you.
Yeah, I'm done.
I'm very hesitant to have it leave the building. I just, I mean, I, I, I just don't, it, it's set up, it's a thing, and I don't wanna have that, you know, accidents happen, I realize that, and I don't, yeah, I just, I just think it's better off as part of the, part of our conference room, and basically lives here, stays here, that's.
So you don't want the fly, you don't want him flying out?
No, no, I don't want Elvis to leave the building.
Yeah, you know.
So I mean, that's, that's mine, and I, that's.
But not outside. Uh, do we need a motion to, to set that as a policy? Or are we happy just to have?
I think it would be helpful to have a vote, and I, again, none of this was meant to be difficult to anyone, but because even I wrestled with the consistency side of it, I wanted to make sure that as the decision-makers, you all had a chance to weigh in, and that I didn't make a decision that might run counter to that.
No, I, it's, I, and I, yeah, I mean, I, I, I just, rather than pick and choose, I'd rather just being across the board, it stays here, rather than, rather than, you know.
So I'm, I'm happy to, to, you wanna motion? I'm happy to move that, that we direct Tyler, that anyone who is able to book the conference room for a meeting, or a conference, or any sort of activity, is authorized to use the owl and the other technical equipment in place, but that none of that equipment should leave the building. Does that, does that cover it?
I think so.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And before the conversation ends, I would say that I, I see Chief Whalen is on tonight. I definitely can make this conference room available at any point, you know, outside of it's already booked. If the fire department wanted to do a Zoom-only evening with it, and maybe not have 30 people pack into the room, but it might be a way to reach, and I have an email list of 100 that I'm happy to put at the fire department's disposal to help make that successful too, because I do think, to Aria's point, it is important that we reach everyone. And I don't think that this decision tonight is an indication of people saying that's not the case.
They haven't voted yet? That pretty much cover everything? All in favor? To oppose?
Two to one. Thank you.
I appreciate the angst and the discussion, so thank you, Tyler, for bringing it to us.
Thank you. And with that, John, I would just note that we have an abatement application denial for Scott, the Scott and Weller Revocable Trust Relative Devaluation to be signed tonight. And the other ones will come up at the next meeting. And with that application denial in the letter that we send, we will also be following up that the taxes have been abated in full. Just again, to restate that, and I would turn this back to you for public comment.
Is there any public comment?
Yeah, yes, I'd like to make a comment.
Oh, sorry, I, I didn't, I saw Lisa's hand first, I'm sorry. Jim, I'll get you next. That's okay?
That's fine.
Uh, Lisa?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, we certainly, as members of the planning board, welcome any comments you have regarding the survey. And Aria, thanks for the indigenous people. I've already changed on the survey. I just want you to be cognizant of the fact that the survey's already fairly long. And our goal is to get people to respond, get as many responses as possible. And typically, people don't respond well to surveys, so the longer they are, the less likely they are to respond. So we have tried to develop a survey that we think addresses the most important questions that we want answered right now, without discouraging people by the length, and also without scaring people. So if we get into questions that are too detailed, or questions that property owners see as potentially limiting their ability to be owners of short-term rentals, we are concerned that that may scare people off, and we don't want that. We want people to answer as honestly as possible, and we want as many responses as possible. So, things like, who do you list with? Is a question I'm not sure at this point is relevant for our immediate purposes. Who polices your property? At this point, again, that's something we absolutely have discussed many times so far. And eventually, that will be something that we come, we circle back around. If in fact, we discover from this survey that short-term rentals do need to be addressed by the town. But we're not even at the point where we know the answer to that question yet, and part of this survey is that fact-finding process. So please, give us your suggestions. But do keep in mind that we are trying to keep this as short and as manageable for people filling it out as is possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Jim, I think you were next.
Yes, thank you. I think many of you know that the commercial clambers in town are required to put in conservation hours. That's a requirement of Department Marine Resources. And I think most of you know that the clam population is diminishing, and we feel we need to do everything we can to sustain that. And the best way to do that is through seeding clams. And we had a limited budget, as mentioned earlier. And we felt if we could get more substantial funding, and we didn't wanna go to the town to ask for increased budget, cuz that's, that's very undesirable. I put out a letter, it was to Bronwyn's point, it didn't go to everybody. My email list is expans, and I didn't feel that request should've gone all over town. So people that have expressed interest and been involved in discussions with the shellfish committee were the ones I approached. And we have raised funds, and we would like to spend them as much as we can this year. But we also believe that we will not spend all the money we're raising. So I'd like to talk to Mary tomorrow and see how the finances need to be handled in, in the town finances, if we can find a way to then roll this forward. Next, the best way seeding works is to do it continually, and we have done it in the past, but not every year. And we would like to do that. Seeding has worked in other towns, and we hope it can work here and build that resource back up to support our commercial fishermen, our commercial clambers.
Okay, thank you, Jim, thanks.
Bob, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, just, just a quick comment. I, I guess I don't understand part of the policy about speaking at meetings. I understand that you want to have concise meetings, so it doesn't drag out too long, and you don't want everybody in town speaking. I had requested specifically to be put on the agenda tonight to speak to the, the board about our request. And Tyler did a very good job of presenting what I was going to say. But it seems to me that if I'm the person that made the request, you honored that request by putting it on the agenda, that makes me not a member of the public, but a member of the, the meeting, and the people that are participating in the meeting. And I don't wanna get into a big discussion, I'm just to give one person's point of view. Thank you.
There any other comments?
I'll give you a little update on the, on the GM. We're presently working on a contract to renew a contract, I should say, with Waldo County. And we're working on another contract with ICE, but we've been working on that for almost a year, and that's moving time. Same as the people they're looking for, I guess, so. We've also worked on a 20-year plan for repairs. The building's already 20 years old, and things break down, and some things break down you don't expect to break down, but you have a lot of computer things and door locks that are all, they're outdated and there's no parts to them anymore. It's so old. So we've been working on, on that kind of stuff, so. And I've also been assigned to the MCCA, Maine County Commission Association Risk Pool. So I'll discover what that's all about when I finally get there. That's it.
Thanks, Todd. Thanks for coming down.
Is that all? Yes, so entertain a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Thanks, everybody.